Good evening to everybody. This is the Board of Selectmen and Acting as Wage and Personnel Board as needed, meeting of December 13th, 2021, starting at 6:30 PM. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording this meeting? Okay, in accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the December 13th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam and you should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. The meeting will also be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. So, right at 6:30, we have a hearing for a tattoo parlor. So I'm going, I do believe I see Mr. Valentin, is that how we say it?
Yeah, Anthony Valentin, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna start by reading the legal notice that has to be posted. So it says, "The Lakeville Board of Selectmen, acting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Monday, December 13th, 2021, at 6:30 PM remotely upon the petition of Anthony, sorry, Valentin, for a special permit to operate a tattoo shop in an industrial zone located at 12 Harding Street, Suite 102, Lakeville, Mass, as provided by the Lakeville zoning bylaws. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the December 13th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date, www.lakecam.tv backslash." Submitted by Abigail Fabian Chair, Richard LaCamera Selectman, Lorraine Carboni Selectman. And this was published in the Middle Borough Gazette Newspaper. Okay, I will entertain a motion to open the hearing.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right. So do we have just Mr. Mr., how do you say it, Anthony?
It's Valentin.
Valentin, okay. Mister, other than you, do we have anyone testifying or offering information at this hearing?
No, it's just me.
Okay, all right. So I'm supposed to swear you in, I guess. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. All speakers need to be recognized by the Chair and all comments are to be addressed from the, to the Chair, which is me. And just a little bit of background, so people know that according to our zoning bylaws, the Board of, let's see, Tattoo or Body Art Establishments must be in a building not used for dwelling purposes or within any interior space or unit shared with another business. A public hearing as well as Board of Health approval will be required, must be compatible with surrounding areas. This was adopted at Special Town Meeting, June 11th, 2001, approved by the Attorney General, September 19th, 2001, because the rules sometimes could be a little bit different from town to town. So if you would like to speak to the application, that would be great. You wanna speak to the application, why you're, where you're applying? Just pretty much you can give us a summary of like what you submitted to us?
Okay, well, I used to be a tattoo artist in Brockton and then I decided to open my own shop and it worked for a year. It was fine, but it just hasn't broke because it was inside of a building that, you know, you can't have a sign, you can't have like people walk in, you know, so it was just, it was like a standstill. So now I'm just trying to open up a shop in a new place. I never had one and hopefully, you know, bring in some money to the city and just maybe get some new young artists and give them a shot to show off their skills and maybe just, you know, build off of that.
Okay. Nate, do you wanna speak at all to the zoning? I think Nate's with us, right?
Yeah, I'm here. Leah, it was great that you read the bylaw section into the minutes. That would be my only concern is that it's not shared with another space and there's no residents there. I can confirm that there are no residents there. I'd just be interested in confirming the fact that it's not shared with any other business space. So this, this tenant space, Mr. Valentin, that you're gonna be leasing, it's just for your purposes, right? It's not a shared space?
No, it's just a tattoo shop, yes.
I'm satisfied, Chairman Fabian.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I just wanna be sure here that I know you gave us a description about the space. I also know that we have a notice from the Health Inspector to the Board of Selectmen from Edward Cullen. Yes, regarding new body art establishment located at 12 Harding Street. And the notice says at the Board of Health meeting held October 6th, 2021, the Board of Health members voted to approve the Body Art Establishment Savage Inc. LLC and the Body Art Practitioner Anthony Valentin pending our health agents inspection. On October 22nd, 2021, pre-op inspection was done and there were several items that needed to be addressed. And then I guess he came back out on November 1st, 2021 for a re-inspection and all items had been pressed, addressed and approval for the permit was granted. So this has already been approved by the Board of Health, correct, everyone?
Yes.
All right, does anyone have, is there anyone? I don't see anything in the comments. Right, we don't have any comments on this from, yep.
Just a note for the record. We receive nine of the 10 certified mail notices that were sent out.
Oh, okay, yep, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you, Tracy. So in this case, Mr. Valentin had to send out registered letters to the abutters and so they've been notified that this meeting was taking place and we don't have, I don't think we have anyone with us, right, Kevin? Anyone other than town people that you wouldn't recognize?
Nope, no one else.
Okay, so the abutters were notified and I don't see anything in the chat either. So if if that's the case, I think we should, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Moved.
Rich, you want a second? A second, it's fine. Any discussion on closing the hearing? Did I forget anything, Tracy? Huh, okay, did I forget anything, Rich? Before we close the hearing?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of closing the hearing?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, so now this is the part where the selectmen discuss the, what the petition that's in front of us, so. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any?
Madam Chair, I know that there was a a previous permit granted back in 2013 with some conditions. So I was hoping that the Board of Selectmen could talk about the conditions. If this is amended, if this is comparable to what we would want here.
Okay.
I, if I can, on number four, on, it's the previous special permit conditions.
Yeah.
Letter D, number four, where it says the business is limited to one practitioner and one apprentice and the apprentice must be licensed by the Lakeville Water Health, which we know. But according to Mr. Valentin, that there's a potential of three additional practitioners. We know, Anthony, when you were looking to bring the additional practitioners onboard?
Um, it's not gonna happen right away. I mean, I have one potential apprentice that's gonna be coming to join in, but that's, that's as far as that goes, right, for now, anyway. But I mean, if it's not allowed, I mean, I wouldn't try to go and do something I'm not supposed to, so.
Right, and it's not that it's not allowed, it's just a condition that the Board would put on it. So I'm curious as to like what your timeframe would be? You were to bring some additional?
There's some work I need to be, I need to do inside of the shop to kinda make separations for Board of Health approved. I mean, we talked about it and so, yeah, once I get that done and it's certified by them, I was gonna try to see if I could add a couple extra people, but if it's not a thing that's, that's possible, then I won't, I won't even try.
Well, I mean, we could actually, if you think that's gonna happen early in 2022, then maybe we could make the permit reflect that and that way you don't have to come back to us right away. So if you think that you'll have at least one more person, then is that the point you're going for, Lorraine?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't wanna limit, Anthony, if he, you know, has it proposed that he's gonna be bringing on additional, would like to be able to bring on additional staff. I don't wanna limit the business.
Yes.
If they're, you know, the bylaws are, you know, the spacing would allow additional staff. You don't wanna limit him on that. So I just wanted to bring that, that point up. Obviously, if he were interested in bringing on the additional staff, that, you know, they would have to be approved through the Board of Health, which is understandable. But I just, I just don't wanna limit him. I wasn't sure why this was limited here in this other special permit, but I just didn't want to mirror what they have here if it's not something that he was looking to do. That's all, just wanted to point that out. Yeah, they, what are your, what were your proposed business hours?
I was hoping to be open 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. It's like 10:00 PM is usually the, the last time that a tattoo shop usually is open in Brockton area. I don't know about in Lakeville because obviously this is new for me here. But I'm, I was just trying to stay open at least until 9:00, 10 o'clock, so around there is fine.
All right, what days a week?
I'm pretty sure I wanna stay open all week.
So Monday through Sunday, you're gonna open from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
That's your proposal?
Yeah.
I thought we saw those somewhere, didn't we?
It could be, there's so many pages here.
I know, I know.
In the shuffle.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we saw those, but.
And Chair, the hours of operation on the sample one are number one, Tuesday through Sunday from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. But that's their hours that they wanted, right?
Yep. So if we, I just wanna be correct here. If we allow a permit, then they can work less than that if they want to, correct? They just can't reopen more, correct?
Yeah, great. So did you have any lease restrictions on the time that you were able to operate, Anthony? Looking right here, but I didn't see anything.
What do you mean, through the landlord or through you guys?
Through the landlord.
No, the landlord is good to go.
All right, and they're in agreement with your hours as well?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't have anything else, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, Rich, you got anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just noting, condition number two on the sample was located in a business zone. This property is in industrial.
Yeah, okay. Nate, you're still with us, right?
Yep, I'm still here.
Sorry.
Just a little unmuted.
I know, I'm just catching you off guard, I'm sorry. So there's no problem with having more than one person, the space, in your opinion, okay?
So when he sets up the space, Chairman Fabian, I'll end up evaluating it for occupant load and make sure aisle width and it meets ADA and AAB requirements for accessibility. I personally wouldn't recommend limitation on practitioners. You know, it's just, we always try to promote business here. It's an appropriate location and industrial zone, as Tracy mentioned. So most of the rest of that stuff will fall under the Board of Health and the Building Department.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair. I would just note that we wouldn't include a restriction unless we were directed to include a restriction.
Yeah.
So it's just gonna be there. It's just, just because you have the sample from the other tattoo parlor somewhere else, that doesn't mean we're gonna do the same thing. The restrictions would only be imposed if the Board said, you know.
I just, my apologies, but I, I didn't look at the property. So I'm just counting on Nate, his evaluation, just to make sure it's not too tight. I mean, it doesn't look at by the lease size, whatever, but, okay. All right, so in our motion, we need to, well, let's run through these hours of operation. We know that it's, we don't have to do any limiting of the practitioner, right? Because if we did that and then the business grew, then he would have to come back. Okay, but each new practitioner would be approved by the Board of Health, correct?
There's an automatic limit anyway.
Yeah.
Unless, yeah, it has to meet the requirements of the Board of Health, yeah.
Okay. All right, so other than the times, I don't necessarily see any reason that we have to put any conditions.
Now, if I can, Madam Chair, I just wanna confirm. I know that the condition number three, the Board of Health does an annual inspection anyways, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I guess the most important thing for us to discuss is the time, Monday through Sunday, it was, right, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM? Is 10:00 PM okay with everyone? Is that too late? Is it, okay? All right. We have a motion, a rough draft of a motion. Should we just put the times in the motion and say that there's no other special conditions? Tracy, or should we just not say?
No, I think if you go with the, with the, with the motion and just have with the following conditions, hours of operation are to be Monday through Sunday from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Do you want me to make that motion, Leah?
Yeah, if you can, that would be great, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion that we issue a special permit to Anthony Valentin for the operation of a tattoo shop at the property located at 12 Harding Street, Suite 102 in Lakeville, Mass, with the following condition, that the hours of operation are to be Monday through Sunday from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All those in favor? It needs to be a roll call vote, we do that all the time, but anyways.
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, well, Mr. Valentin, where did you go here on my screen? There you are. Welcome to Lakeville.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it so much.
I think you'll find it's a great place, we love it here.
I mean, it's so beautiful and it's a really quiet area, so it's, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to not let you guys down, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, before Anthony leaves.
Uh-oh, yep.
I'm gonna have to prepare the special permit and have the Board come in and sign it. So it'll probably be a couple of days and I'll send you an email as soon as it's ready for you to come and pick up, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one, guys.
Yeah, you too, thank you. All right, let me just put all that away, holding on here. All right. So on to agenda item number two, Board of Selectmen announcements. So first off, I'd like to say that I do believe one of the other news stations picked up the story of our police officers doing a good deed for the residents of Lakeville. So some packages were, fell off a truck somewhere and the Police Department made sure they got to where they were supposed to be. It was Officer Rob Schiffer and Officer Wes Fazino, who I believe delivered the packages and some folks in Lakeville have them on their door cameras delivering packages. It's just goes to show you what kind of town we are, you know, instead of letting them get stolen or whatever the case is. The PD did deliveries, so, and I know people were really happy. The few people I saw interviewed were really happy. It's always nice when you see our town in the news in a positive way. So thank you to the PD for going above and beyond, not just that day, but every day. We do have Muckey's Liquors would like to make residents aware. And I think it's, we haven't announced this in a while, so I felt it was kind of good to do. Muckey's Liquors would like to make residents aware that you can help the Lakeville Parks Department by placing your recyclable cans and bottles in the bins at transfer station with the blue sign that says Muckey's. And I think those are the, those are the cans and bottles that are the deposit, right, Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah, yep. So if you don't wanna return those, you can take them to the transfer station and put them in there and Muckey's collects those and cashes them in and gives the money to the Parks Department. So over the last five years, Muckey's has been able to donate $25,000 to the Parks Department and would really like to keep this going. Please consider donating your bottles and cans into the donation bin at the Lakeville Transfer Station at your next drop-off so we can donate them to the Park Department. Muckey's would like to thank everybody who has donated their recyclable cans and bottles over the years to the Parks Department. I thought that was definitely noteworthy. That's all I have. I will ask my fellow selectmen if they have anything.
I don't have anything.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to thank the Joanne Updike and the Lakeville Arts Council for the craft fair that they, they ran at the Blum Pond Lodge on December 3rd, December 4th. It was a great event. I went and there was a lot of crafters there and then everybody was happy and everybody did very well. The second thing is I'd like to thank the Lakeville Lions Club for their annual tree lighting on December 4th. It was well attended. And the Fire Department for delivering sand or on a fire truck. So another great event that happened in town. So thank you to both organizations.
Yep, and then I think the poor tree got blown over in the windstorm and then someone came out and helped them get it back up again, I think, so. There is a lot of good everywhere, right? Anything else from the selectmen before I turn it over to our town administrator? All right, Ari Skytown Administrator, any announcements?
Yes, I have a few, thank you, Madam Chair. First, unfortunately, COVID continues to spread through the community. Lakeville's positivity rate is up significantly over the past several weeks, so we encourage everybody to mask up and get vaccinated and coming into Town Hall and Town Facilities, we ask that residents wear masks. Completion of the old library renovations moving along. The remainder of the staff will be moving in early January. Furniture's being delivered, things are being installed as we speak. We've made significant progress on the hiring of the town planner. You should anticipate a recommendation at next week's board meeting. The state legislature passed its ARPA package, as you know, the surplus package. It's currently weighing the governor's signature, the significant funding in there for a number of initiatives about which we'll be keeping a close eye, including water, sewer infrastructure, broadband infrastructure and a number of things. King Systems File Project will begin January 24th. The initial focus is gonna be on the records in Town Hall. The project, as you know, is entirely funded by a community compact grant, which the town received as part of a joint application with Free Town. We received notice that the town has been awarded a $113,347 Community Compact IT Grant award to improve the town's ability to recover from any adverse cyber events. The, the grant application was really terrific work by Christina Katsouridis and Bob McNally, helping secure our data. Finally, just a reminder to the Board, the next meeting will be December 20th at 4:00 PM, instead of our usual 6:30 PM next week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So, agenda item number four, we have with us Town Clerk Lillian Drain. And this is to review the 2022 Annual Election Available Positions for Office. So I can, I can go through them, unless you want to, Lil.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, so the offices that are up for, that will be on the town election warrant, so we have one-year term for moderator, one moderator position, right now currently held by Katie Goodfellow. So the following are all three-year terms. One selectman is up and that would be yours truly, so Abigail Fabian. One Board of Assessor, who is currently Jonathan Pink. One Board of Health member, Bob Robert Palucci. One Cemetery Commissioner, Joan Morton. Two Finance Committee members, one is Darren Beal, the other one is Lawrence Constance. Two Park Commissioners, currently held by Joe Kosha and Tony Cuppy. One Library Trustee, currently held by Nancy LaFave. The Town Clerk, which is currently held by the fabulous Lillian Drain.
Thank you.
We have five-year terms, a five-year term for one planning board member, which is currently held by Barbara Mankowski. And then the Board also moves to include, well, we haven't made the motion yet, but the Board, well, we need to elect one three-year term for Lakeville, one three-year term for Free Town, the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District Committee Member, currently held by Laura Ramsden. I think I got them all in there, right?
You sure did.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we approve all these positions to be put on the town election warrant for the annual town election.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
Fabian, I, all right. And Lil, do you have the date for nomination papers? If anyone is interested in running?
Sure, they will be available Monday, January 10th. Please call to make an appointment so we can get your package ready.
Okay. Monday, January 10th, if you're interested in running for any of those positions. All right, thank you, Lil.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have agenda item number five, which is so the the Community Preservation Act passed at town meeting. So now part two is to, that it goes on the ballot. So I will entertain a motion to place the following question on the 2022 Annual Town Election Ballot. Do I need to read the whole thing?
You should.
Okay. I will entertain a motion that we place the following question on the 2022 Annual Town Election Ballot. Shall the town of Lakeville accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws as approved by its legislative body, a summary of which appears below? Sections 3 to 7 of Chapter 44B of the General Laws of Massachusetts, also known as Community Preservation Act, establishes a dedicated fund source to enable the town to: 1. Acquire, create, and preserve open space. 2. Acquire, preserve, rehabilitate, and restore historic resources. 3. Acquire, create, preserve, rehabilitate, and restore land for recreational use. 4. Acquire, create, preserve, and support community housing. And 5. Rehabilitate or restore open space and community housing that is acquired or created with community preservation funds. In Lakeville, the funding source for these community preservation purposes will be a surcharge of 1% on the annual property tax assessed on real property and matching funds provided by the state from a trust fund created by the act. If approved, the act will take effect on July 1st, 2022, and the following will be exempt from a surcharge. 1. Property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or lower moderate income senior housing. 2. $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property. And 3. $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class 3 commercial property and Class 4 industrial property as defined in Section 2A of said Chapter 59. A taxpayer receiving a regular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a pro rata reduction in surcharge. A community preservation committee will be established by Town of Lakeville General Bylaws to study community preservation resources, possibilities, and needs to make annual recommendations to Town Meeting on spending the funds, and it's a yes or no question.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I had two questions, please. Do I, so this wording came from Town Council?
I'll weigh in on that. So Town Council drafted it, we sent it to the CPA people. The Coalition had a couple, had an edit there, suggested they brought it back to Town Council. Town Council signed off on the edit.
Okay, the second question is to make sure it's clarified here. It says the surcharge of annual property tax assessed on real property and matching funds provided by the state, it's not really true matching funds.
They match up to a certain point, there's a percentage.
Right, but you're telling the taxpayer that if we spend 1% of the annual property taxes, then it's going to be matched by the state, that is not correct.
I think the language that we have is prescribed by the state, so that's the language in the, in the, in 44B. The I think the argument response would be that matching funds doesn't mean one-for-one match, it just means a matching fund. Could be 20 cents on the dollar, but still a matching fund.
No, I understand that, all right. What I'm saying is if you look at this, for me, if I'm a normal taxpayer and I'm looking at this and it says, okay, the state's got to match the funds of anything of 1%, we pay annual property tax assessment, that's just not correct. That's me, you know, maybe I'm wrong. Okay, thank you.
Does it delay the ballot if we delay this one week, Lillian?
No, Madam Chair, you still have 35 days before the election to send me that ballot, so you have until February 28th. So you've got plenty of time to revise that.
Or clarify it.
Yes.
Okay, is that Lorraine, do you have any comment on that? Do you want a clarification?
My, no, my only thing was just to ask if Town Council approved it, so I was, Rich beat me, beat me to the punchline. So I think that, you know, I understand what, where, you know, Rich is going with this one, because I, you know, when you read it again, you know, I can see, see that, but I also understand that, you know, matching funds doesn't mean, you know, one-to-one. But, I mean, maybe we'll just seek clarification on it.
Yeah, Ari, can we just do that, just seek clarification and?
Yeah, I'm thinking in my head, how else would we word it?
Right.
And any matching funds and?
I do know that some people don't.
And funds provided by the state, and I could?
Yeah, I just know that some people don't, you know, watch anything and they just read the question when they go in, so.
I understand, I understand, Madam Chair, I am literally right now thinking about how to make that, this work, and the only thing I can think of is take out the word matching.
Right, what about contributing funds provided by the state?
Perhaps, I'll talk to Town Council.
Okay, do we need a vote to table or can we just table?
We don't need to do anything, do we? Just bring it to the next meeting.
Table, you should, you should table it so we can bring it back next meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table this until next week.
So moved.
Okay.
Question on the tabling, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
On the camera.
AB and I, okay, so we'll just.
Full disclosure, if I don't have guidance from Town Council by next week, we'll do it in the January meeting, that we have plenty of time.
You've got plenty of time.
Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you, Lil.
You're welcome.
I think that's it for Lil, right? Okay. All right, number six, draft, discuss the scope, draft scope of work for water feasibility study to town facilities and parks. Ari, I will turn it over to you.
As you know, thank you, as you know, the town is engaged in services of several firms to function as OPMs on major capital projects. Last week you approved, or two weeks ago, sorry, you approved two, you reviewed two OPM scopes for the DPW building and the Town Hall Fire Station, Fire Station Study. This is a third one, the study, study to review the provision of potable and irrigation water to town, water to town facilities and parks. The intention would be that this would be funded out of ARPA proceeds, which we have on hand, which is, you know, fully eligible of water, as water infrastructure. The idea would be to, 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 to look at Water and Clear Pond Park, John Pond Park, Ted Williams Camp, the Police Station, as well as the Historic Library, I believe that's it, yeah, those Historic Library, to determine the best way to provide, the best configuration for providing water, as you, as you know, water is a bit makeshift and problematic in those locations, and this would enable us to determine whether going to municipal water, drill wells, or, you know, and provide the, when the necessary infrastructure to support it as well. This could, in the end, be a fairly pricey project by the time it's done. The initial, the initial feasibility study, though, is only estimated around $15,000. We, again, I would anticipate that any cost would be borne by ARPA revenue. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have. Also Nate is here and Frank as well.
Yep. Okay, do you, either, does either selectman have a question?
No, just more of, just for purposes of, you know, clarity for the folks watching this from home, that the water, we have the water lines right now for the Historic Library, the Police Station, and Ted Williams Camp, right now, what, those are on Totten Water.
Correct.
All right, and then Clear Pond Park and John Pond Park are not municipal water.
Correct, Clear Pond, we're looking, that we probably would extend from Totten. Totten, Totten, Totten Water. John Pond, there's a neighboring subdivision that might work, it's on, it's on water, that might be possibility. We actually may be looking at wells in some cases, as far as the Police Station Historic Library goes, between the irrigation side.
The irrigation, right, because that can be very costly.
Are crazy high, right, so the water costs, so that'd be another way, so it's going to be a mix of solutions. And a bunch of different, a bunch of different things, which is why the scope could, you know, this could develop on its own to some, into some, a little bit, but this is the place to start. So, yes, we think of some real upside opportunity and it's, it's a good use of ARPA money, it's definitely what it was intended for. And, and puts, you know, puts us squarely in the eligible use category, so I feel pretty good about that.
Good. Thank you.
Rich, anything, any questions?
Oh, I'll say, thank you.
Okay. So does Nate or Frank want to offer any comments or anything? Just, you don't have to.
I have, I have nothing, I, well, I'll just add that it's a, it's a great project and it's the right thing to do for the town. It's going to save money on irrigation, it's going to provide healthy potable water to our residents on the drinking side.
Okay. So do we need to vote or just?
No actions required, just if you're comfortable with this scope of work, then I shall go forth verily.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with it, I think, I agree with Nate, I think it's going to be, you know, we've had some of these same water issues for a long time, so. Okay, all right, I mean, yeah, anyone want to say anything and support? Okay, all right. Next, we have number seven. Request change of manager at the Back Nine Club. So when managers change, we have to approve permits to reflect that, so I will entertain a motion to approve the change of manager for the Back Nine Club from Mark White to Frank Gracia Jr.
Moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
I didn't hear anybody, did somebody say, so?
Yeah, Tracy, sorry, oh my God, I'm sorry, Lorraine, Lorraine said she made the motion, I can second.
I'll second that motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear her.
All right, no, that's okay, any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor of the manager change?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Fabian, I. All right, number seven, number eight, site plan review request. So the planning board has sent a site plan and application to us for its, for our review. And we'll take comments for the property located at 183 Rhode Island Road. I will open the floor to the selectmen.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, I read through the document, it looks like they're just proposing that they're widening the entrance and make it more safer than I guess that what it is now, but that, did I misunderstand if they were looking to add another entrance into the property? Is it just widening that one?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
It's just that one entrance, but they're reconfiguring the parking lot for the entrance for the restaurant, but it's only one entrance, the one.
Okay, so that one entrance is the only, the cut that is coming into, it's just going to widen.
They are widening the entrance, okay, so it is a change there. So one of the things, and it was very difficult for me to look at the plan, because the wording was very small, as you know. So I, I wanted to get clarification on what the requirements were and what was going to be done. So I called the attorney there that's listed, Bob Mather, and I asked him two questions. The first question was that about that, that modification, as everybody knows, Route 79 is in a planning stage right now to be redone in that area, including the sidewalks, and I wanted to know that if they were going to conform to the engineering plans that have already been designed for the Route 79 project, and he said that they have talked to the engineer, our engineer, and they're going to comply to what those requirements are, so there won't be any changes going forward, they'll be able to use what is already there, so it won't have to be modified or torn up or whatever. The second thing that I mentioned to him is that there is requirements because of new sidewalks there, or a permanent easement, and also some temporary easements to move utilities. And I asked them if they would be willing to include that in their site plan that they're presenting to the planning board, and they said that they would, which is good. Because that way they're, they've already agreed to it, and now we can just work on figuring out what needs to be done.
Okay. Yeah, that's, okay.
I just want to say, Rich, I had the same sentiment as you, the same questions about that with the project coming up, so I think that having the foresight is, is excellent, and I think that, you know, where, you know, we're all communicating that message, so I think that's a good thing. Yay.
Yeah. All right.
So Tracy, if you could draft those conditions that was just discussed to the planning board for their meeting, I think it's on Thursday night if I'm not mistaken. So I know Nate is aware of it, I talked to Nate about it, so this is good, because this will save us legal fees and all kinds of stuff, you know, having to do with that project, because the sidewalk going down in front of the Baron is pretty long, so. Okay.
We'll make sure they're taken care of.
Thank you.
And get that to the planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that's all we need on that, right? No boat there. So now we come to the annual licenses that we have to renew. So first, we're going to do the annual liquor licenses. And I just want to do these correctly, because you don't want to have to do them a second time. So I do believe we posted the addresses. So we shouldn't have to, to read them, do we want to take that chance?
You posted the addresses.
Yeah, so we shouldn't have to read them all, right?
No, no, I don't think, I don't think so.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
If we want to be one step careful, you can word the motion to instruct me to include the addresses to the licensees in the motion, and I can take care of that, and that'll, that'll give us another level of protection.
Okay. All right, so Lorraine, do you want to do the liquor licenses and I'll do the common victualers? Or Rich, do you want to do any?
I'm happy to run down the list.
Yeah, if you can do those.
Now, do we want to do them individually, is that what we said? Or do, I mean, I'll read them all, but do we want to do them individually?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Last year, the way the board did it was, it was to renew the following annual liquor licenses, all with expiration dates of December 31st, 2022. And then it was just package store wine and malt, and they were, just listed those, package store alcohol list. And that's how we did it last year.
All right, and we don't have to do the hours of licensee of the fees? In the motion?
You don't have to, no, that's just basically for the information for the board.
Okay.
You can all, you can say same hours, you can just note that they would be the same hours of operation that are currently in existence.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we renew the following liquor licenses, annual liquor licenses with an expiration of December 31st, 2022 as follows. Gulf Resources Inc. As a package store wine and malt license. Package store all alcohol license would be Mahan N E Song Corporation, doing business as Lakeville Liquors and Market. B B P Inc. Doing business as Muckey's Liquors. Tamara Wine and Spirits Incorporated. Arboc Lickers Incorporated, doing business as Star Liquor Market. And then the all restaurant, excuse me, restaurant all alcohol licenses for Hawaii Corp, doing businesses. Um, and then the all restaurant, excuse me, restaurant all alcohol licenses for Hawaii Corp., doing businesses Orchid of Hawaii Restaurant. Pocoy Brook Golf Club, LLC, DBA Pocoy Brook Club. Lakeville Golf Club Incorporated, DBA Lakeville Golf Club. LaBaron Operating Company, LLC, DBA LaBaron Hills Country Club. And the Back Nine Club, LLC, DBA The Back Nine Club. Baldi's Pizzeria Incorporated. Ken and L, Inc., DBA Saga Sushi. Club All Alcohol License for Lakeville Fraternal Order of Eagles, area number three nine nine four. And then general on-premise wine and malt would be Lakeville Virtual Entertainment Group, Inc., DBA The Broken Tea Virtual Golf Club. And then general on-premise all alcohol beverages, fifty-eight Grove, Inc., DBA Boston Tavern. Of course, I did put the hours in when I read that, but.
Can you just uh, add as reflected, so Tracy can just reflect it in the minute?
As reflected in the information provided in our packet.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
I just have a question. Is the Boston Tavern one? The one that we said, is that for the lodge?
Yes, fifty-eight East Grove Street, Inc., DBA Boston Tavern is for twenty-eight Precinct Street.
Alright, isn't that the one that we were gonna waive the fee? Didn't we vote to waive the fee?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so. Okay. Right, any other discussion on these? Any other comments, questions? Gulf Resources is?
Those, yes. Those, yes, on Bedford Street.
Okay, oh, alright. Okay, um, alright, all those in favor of these license renewals?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Fabian, I. Alright, so um, Rich, do you wanna do the? Common Victulas, or you want me to do it?
Uh, whatever you want, try with me, I don't care.
Next on our agenda, hold on.
That's one and two licenses next.
Okay. Yeah, you wanna do the class one and two, and then I can do the common victory?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so um, we need to uh, review and revoke to uh, renew the class one, class two annual licenses. Seven uh, class two used car dealers and two class one dealers have been submitted for renewal of their applications from January first, two thousand twenty-two through January, two thousand twenty-three. First one, class two, uh, license renewals, automotive services, two ninety-eight Bedford Street. Chris Alteri, uh, doing business as C E Enterprises, forty-two Freetown Street. Leonardo, um, Solander, doing business Solander Auto Sales, eighteen Staples Shores Road. Andrews Family Auto, seventy-nine Main, Main Street. Linda Barry and Jason Barry doing business as Elite Auto Sales, four thirty-one Bedford Street. Ginner, Greenwich, Greenwich Automotive, thirty-five Bedford Street. Dave Rose doing business as Dave's Auto, sixty-seven Main Street. And the uh, class one license renewals of Russo's Recreational Reynolds, one fifty Bedford Street. Route forty-four Collision Center R Vs and Boats, eight Harding Street. I'd like to, um, Madam Chair, I'd like to add onto the motion that all these, uh, the class one and the class two license, all the conditions of those licenses are the same as last year.
Okay, well, second. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Fabian, I. Alright, and then we have the common victula licenses, so. These are annual common victular license renewals. The common victular license with an expiration date of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two are as follows. So these are January first through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, right?
Correct.
Okay, I uh, make a motion that we approve the following renewals. Baldi's Pizzeria, Inc., forty Main Street, Sunshine Cafe, twelve Harding Street. Aramac, which is food service for Aponequod High School, Freetown Lakeville Middle School, George R. Austin Intermediate School, and Assawamset Elementary School. Royal Pizza, which is sixty-eight Main Street, Tanned, Inc., doing business as Subway, three thirty Bedford Street. Next Dine LLC for Ocean Spray, one Ocean Spray Drive. The Back Nine Club, LLC, doing business as The Back Nine Club, seventeen Heritage Hill Road. Pocoy Brook Golf Club, LLC, doing business as Pocoy Brook Pub, twenty Leonard Street. Hawaii Corp., doing business as Orchid of Hawaii Restaurant, two oh one Bedford Street. Lakeville Aerie number three nine nine four Fraternal Order of Eagles, Inc., two seventeen County Street. Lakeville Golf Club, Inc., doing business as Lakeville Golf Club, forty-four Clear Pond Road. Assawamset Golf Company, LLC, doing business as LaBaron Hill Country Club. One eighty-three Rhode Island Road, Ken and L, Inc., doing business as Saga Sushi, nine Harding Street. Sandy LLC Dunkin' Donuts, three thirty Bedford Street, J and J's Seafood Drive-In, one ninety-seven County Street. Someone give me a second.
So moved.
Um, any discussion on those? I think we have only one or two that are stragglers, so we'll hopefully uh, finish those up next week. Um, so all those in favor of these renewals?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera, I.
Fabian, I. Alright, um, now we have uh, review and vote to approve annual dancing on weekdays, public entertainment on Sunday licenses, livery license, and coin-operated amusement licenses. Lorraine, you wanna help me out?
Sure. Um, I move, make a motion that we approve the following license, uh, licenses that are up for renewal. Um, for the, well, what Leah just said, the annual dancing on week, weekdays, public entertainment on Sunday licenses, livery license and coin-operated music, amusement licenses. So livery license, um, this, which will expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, for JP's Limousine Service for one vehicle. For dancing on weekends, I'm glad that we are approving this, cuz I like to dance seven days a week. All licenses expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, LaBaron Operating Company, LLC. Uh, DBA LaBaron Hills Country Club, Hawaii Corp., DBA Orchid of Hawaii, of Hawaii Restaurant. Lakeville Golf Club, Inc., DBA Lakeville Golf Club, and the Lakeville Aerie three thirty-nine ninety-four Fraternal Order of the Eagles, Inc. For coin-operated amusements expires December thirty-first, um, twenty-twenty-two. It's the Aerie thirty-nine ninety-four Fraternal Order of Eagles Incorporated, there are two machines. And Lakeville Golf Club Incorporated, DBA Lakeville Golf Club, for one machine. And the public entertainment on Sundays, for Sundays during two thousand twenty-two are licenses expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. LaBaron Operating Company, LLC, DBA LaBaron Hills Country Club. Hawaii Corp., DBA Orchid of Hawaii Restaurant, Lakeville Golf Club, Inc. DBA Lakeville Golf Club, and the Lakeville Aerie thirty-nine ninety-four Fraternal Order of Eagles Incorporated.
Alright.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
And Fabian, I. Alright, uh, now we have the minutes from our almost whatever, three-hour meeting, four hours, whatever it was, on November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
Moved.
Second.
Any uh, corrections, any, any, anything?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have um, one correction on page nine. Um, under the discussion and possible vote to waive the um, twenty-twenty-two liquor license renewal for fee for the fifty-eight East Grove, Inc., DBA Boston Tavern, second paragraph. Um, I did re-watch the uh, video of us. And the motion was made by um, Chairman Fabian and seconded by uh, Selectman LaCamera.
Okay, so a motion was made by Chair Fabian stepping down and seconded. I, so, yeah, cuz I don't think you made that motion, right?
No.
So I'll second that motion to amend it.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion to amend? Can we just amend the whole thing? Approve it with a correction?
Yes.
Alright, so um, we just changed the original motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-ninth with the correction offered by Selectman Carboni to waive the license renewal fee for twenty-twenty-two liquor license. Is that good? Okay. All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Fabian, I. Alright, any new business? Going once, going twice, alright. Old business, okay, so at the meeting of the twenty-ninth, we did, we did create a steering committee to um, for the Town Hall Fire Station feasibility study. On that, we had town administrator, one selectman, building commissioner, I think he said, fire chief. And I think we had Lillian Drain, right? And has Lillian agreed, Ari? Yes?
Yes, yes, she has.
So then we just need to appoint one selectman.
And Madam Chair, if I can, I just wanted to just make mention that I'd be interested in, in being the liaison to this feasibility committee.
Okay, um, I don't want to do this, Rich?
Um, I definitely wanna do it because I was involved in the original feasibility study going back to uh, two thousand and six. And um, I've served on um, four school building committees. I've served on the police, the COA, and the um, you know, building committee, and um, this, this committee is gonna require a lot of day meetings.
Yep. Okay.
And we know that for sure?
Oh, absolutely. We're not gonna have the uh, why would we have the, the poor guy come, you know, for night meetings when we can do it during the day? I mean, everybody else can uh, do it during the day, so.
Um, so I don't wanna do it, so you both do. I guess I get to break the tie. So I am going to ma, step down his chair, make a motion to appoint Rich LaCamera. Sorry, Lorraine, I know you wanna do it.
Well, I know, I mean, what's, this'll be a, a full deck for Rich getting his uh, his name on the plaque for this one too. But I just.
I don't need my name on plaques, Lorraine. That doesn't bother me at all. I do it's best interest of the town, so that com, comment was uncalled for.
It was a compliment comment.
You want. Excuse me, the motion hadn't been seconded for discussion. And this is the feasibility study, and the next would be a building. This is not a building committee. This is the feasibility study to just get to what the options are to make a decision.
Understood.
Okay, so I made a motion, and I need a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? And um, mostly, well, you know, I, I mean, Rich has a ton of experience, but you know, I do know that um, I don't want the study to be hampered by day meetings too, and I know, Lorraine, you have a tight schedule, so. And we'll see how it goes from there. Alright, uh, all those in favor of Rich LaCamera being the selectman representative to the steering committee for the Town Hall Fire Station Feasibility Study?
Carboni, I.
Okay.
Camera, I.
And Fabian, I. Alright, um, yeah, I, I, I'm really excited for that, that work to start happening, actually. Um, any other old business from anybody? Selectman first, and then we'll give Ari a shout out.
I, I have something, Madam Chair. After our last meeting, um, when we talked about the waiving of the, the fee for Boston Tavern, you know, we had a pretty good discussion. I know that there were some, you know, that was brought to my attention during that meeting, that there were some, you know, some issues. So um, you know, you both made it known that there was information available, um, if we wanted to, you know, get acclimated to what happened, and Rich had alluded to the fact that there were dozens of emails, so I reached out to Ari um, and asked Ari if he could forward the emails to me so I could get myself up to speed because I wasn't, I really have no idea what the whole situation was. You know, that led up to that discussion, so I'd like, wanted to get the background, but Ari suggested that I, I come back to the two of you. Because this would have put some, you know, pressure on his office, um, to get that information, but I really would like to have the opportunity to get myself acclimated to what happened because I was not privy to any emails, um, or any of that other discussion of what brought us to that, what the issues were with Boston Tavern getting their license, so, you know, what took them so long, so. I'm bringing it to this board so that I can request.
What was, what was it exactly that you were requesting?
Just the emails, because um, I came on board in April, so I just wanted Ari to forward all the you know, the emails and any other correspondence, uh, that.
I mean, I know there were emails, I'm not saying, I don't think there were tons and tons of emails. I think um, uh, you, I, I mean, you could probably have a conversation with Mark Rich through, with Ari, without Ari, um, he could provide you some information. Tracy could probably, I mean, there wasn't I, I don't even think there was that many, but um, I didn't ask for a lot of supporting information to be put in the packet because I know that you were, you voted on a couple of one-day licenses, and I know that we had discussed the one-day licenses when we were approving those. And we had said that there had been issues, you know, with um, the A B C C.
But to this day, I still, I have no idea what the issues were.
Yep.
I'm a little confused, Lorraine, because um, you voted at three meetings having to do with the issues with the Boston Tavern agreement, um, like liquor license. So if you read the minutes, it's very clear in the minutes as to why they had to be done and had to be changed. And um, if you wanna go through it, I'd gladly go through it all. But I don't, I don't think it's reasonable to, I, I just don't understand why you're requesting this information. For what purpose and what's behind it, and you're requesting all emails going back to April fifth. That's ridiculous. That's a, a lot additional work to have to sort through all these emails. That's ridiculous, that's a lot additional work to have to sort through all these emails for all these people to do that, I just don't understand what you're looking for.
Well, I'm not looking for anything specific, but an understanding, yes, I did vote on two occasions for a one day liquor license.
No, I'm talking about the licenses, I'm talking, not the one day liquor license, I'm talking about Boston Tavern's liquor license, you voted on it. Go back and look at the minutes.
Right.
I did the one day liquor, but I know that there were, you know, issues and why they had to get a one day liquor license, but I don't know what the issues were, I really have no idea.
Right, I think we.
What's gonna change, what's gonna change now?
Does it matter, Rich, I'm asking for the information for my own personal benefit, understanding.
For what reason?
Because.
You voted, you voted twice on their liquor licenses.
One day liquor license.
No, we did not, they weren't one day liquor licenses, go back and look at the original liquor license. And, you know, Tracy could provide you the minutes of the meeting and they were voted the liquor license because what happened was that it was, that we were told by town council and we were told by A B C C that they needed it submitted a certain way, they didn't do that, okay, we approved that liquor license. We then sent it to the, Tracy sent it to the A B C. They kicked it back, I believe that was on July sixteenth, if I'm not mistaken, and said they had to do it differently. So we redid it and we revoted it again. And so I think, I don't remember the exact dates, but, you know, it was sent back into the state. Tracy, can you tell me the date it was sent back to the state, I don't remember.
Well, I mean, I can't, I don't have that information in front of me.
It was sent back to the state and the state did nothing on it for over three months.
So, so I have it.
Respond to it.
Okay.
So I, I don't understand why we're wasting time on this, read the minutes first.
Okay, you know what, let's have Ari just give us some of the dates here.
So we first became aware of an issue on July twentieth, when Tim Melanowski informed Tracy that the A B C C instructed him to change the vendor on the contract to fifty-eight East Grove Inc. She reached out to the A B C C to obtain clarification. The A B C C investigator responded to her Tracy's email on the twenty-third of July. At my instruction, she reached out to Mark Rich at K P Law to draft a revision. Mark provided the draft license agreement on July twenty-ninth, just finalized the following, we can approve by the board at your August ninth meeting. Signatures were completed on the sixteenth, the document was sent to the A B C C on August eighteenth, and that's the last we heard.
I mean, none of this is like, you know, there's no other reason that other than, I think initially it sat on the A B C C's desk, too. And that's when initially before, right after the contract had been signed or, I don't even know what the date was. And they said, oh, we'll expedite it, and they never did expedite it, so, I mean, I.
Took them several months to get back to us.
Right.
To find out, yeah.
So. There's, other than, I just really didn't want to, you know, like blame people in a public meeting because these are our partners here that we work with at the state level and our attorneys. I mean, you know, unfortunately, the open, fortunately and unfortunately, the open meeting laws prevent, you know, me from just calling you up, Lorraine, and saying, hey, this is the low down and, you know. But I interact with Ari all the time, I interact with Tracy all the time, I talk to Christina if it's something relevant, I mean, you know. This, I thought your problem or your issue with the waiving the fee was that we had never really done that for anybody before. And in hindsight, I should have, you know, had Tracy put a note in the packet that we did do that last year. We did, you know, waive, well, we, we discounted the fee. So it wasn't like we had never done that before. So I don't know what it is that you're asking for that. I mean, all emails going back to April fifth, that's a lot of work. I'd be happy to send you whatever I have. You know, I, it's probably easier for me to do it, but I don't even think there's that many emails, it's more conversations between the lawyers and the A B C C.
Well, I, I mean, when Rich alluded to the fact that there were dozens, I didn't get any emails on it, so I was just curious that there was, you know, a better way of me understanding what happened and what, you know, what the process was and where it bottlenecked and you know, what the issues were, so maybe we can avoid it from ever happening again.
Well, we only have one function facility that the town owns and that's enough management for us right now, so. I, you know, we finally did it and did it right, I mean, I, you know. I have no idea how long it would take to do a request like that, but I, I mean, I don't think it's necessary. I, I don't know why, you know, you can't get what you're looking for from Ari and Tracy, I mean, Tracy was the one, and like I said, Tracy knew that I kept asking about it. And as soon as it came in, she told me, and that's how we got it on the twenty-ninth, so.
Well. I guess it really doesn't, never mind.
Okay. But, you know. The only thing I can say is I don't know how much conversation you have with Ari and Tracy, but, I mean, I talk to everybody all the time. And if something comes up, and I know that you had reached out to Ari, but Ari may not, I, I think he, Ari, I think you knew about last year, but it was a last minute. You know, even last year, it just.
I, I will fess up that I was told that there had been waivers granted, there wasn't much definition on that, I, I, I probably spotted that out without having full information on that and didn't know specifically was the fifty percent that was done last year, which a lot of localities did, by the way. Yeah. And I, due to the COVID situation, and that was what was alluded to, I think that we thought that there were more than that, Lorraine, but there weren't.
Yeah.
Was that, was the fifty percent?
And honestly, I try to make sure that, you know, either Tracy or Ari, when we're working on the agenda, send stuff out so that you're not waiting until Friday night to get your packet, I know how frustrating that can be. And, you know, sometimes now we're getting confused because things are sent, you know, earlier and then reprinted for the packet. I'm just trying to do the best I can here, I, I really thought that you knew what was going on and you know, we had taken a few votes on it, otherwise I would have asked Tracy to provide the summary, so. There's not much more to the story here. I don't know, I don't know what else to tell you, but. All right, is there any other old business? Okay, anything else that can come before the board? All right, if that's the case, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Fabian, I, all right, thank you, everyone.